Glad when you are.
Okay, so I am going to call to order the public meeting of July 8th. And Connie.
So first we're going to administer the oath of the newly elected board members and that would be Peter McSherry and Eddie Lennon. If you could raise your right hand. To you, Peter McSherry, Eddie Lennon solemnly affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that you will faithfully discharge the authority of your executive ability, the duties of a member of the Board of Education and of a一所 public school to which you have been elected.
I do. Yes, I do.
Just one in. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Save the cheers for the end.
Yeah. I'm gonna call for a motion to move into executive session.
Motion.
Second.
Motion.
Second. Peter and Sarah, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. It's 6:51 and we are reconvening the public session. At this point, I am going to ask for an election of a temporary chair.
I'm going to nominate Pete McSherry.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
So you can pass the gavel to Pete.
All right, so you can pass the gavel to Pete.
Excellent. I feel the power. I'm not going to say it's Thor-like, but it's close.
The puts has started.
So Pete is going to call for the election for the president of the board for this year.
Going to call for election of the president of the board for this year? Nominate, nominate for president?
Nominate Eddie Lennon for president.
Sir, he's nominating Eddie Lennon.
I second. Do we have to say all in favor or no?
Yes, you do.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then we need a nomination for the vice president of the board.
Nomination for...
Susan is nominating Sarah.
I'll second it.
My...
Eddie's second it.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Congratulations and thank you. Thank you both.
So now Eddie, if you raise your right hand...
And I would just like to say that Michael instructed me and said that he supported both Eddie and Sarah. And congratulations.
Okay.
Thank you.
So if you raise your right hand, Eddie, do you, Eddie Lennon, do you, Eddie Lennon, solemnly affirm that you support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York and that you will faithfully discharge, according to the best of your ability, the duties of president of the Board of Education of the Bronx School Public Schools to which you have been nominated?
I do.
Okay, great. Congratulations on that, Eddie.
Thank you.
And Sarah, if you raise your right hand, do you, Sarah Kenny, solemnly affirm that you support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York and that you will faithfully discharge, according to the best of your ability, the duties of vice president of the Board of Education of the Bronx School Public Schools to which you have been nominated?
I do.
Those of you who have your oaths before you, you can sign. I think you have the number oath.
Oh, okay, great.
Okay, so... So Eddie said Sarah is present.
Yes, I would like to just say thank you very much, guys. I'm honored to serve with such dedicated community members. I think it's, I think we're doing a good job and I think, you know, we're just going to keep on the same track and want to thank you guys for all of your hard work for the kids at the school. And I have to, I guess, give it over to Sarah now since she's there in person and she'll run the rest of the meeting.
Thanks. And Eddie and I want to thank Christina and Michael for their leadership of our board, how they served our community and our students and our staff. They've helped us move our district forward in such meaningful ways. We have big shoes to fill and we're excited to do so. So, thank you, Christina and Michael. Well said.
Thank you. Yes.
So, so now we're going to look at the committee assignments, the liaison assignments for the year. And I'll flash that on the screen. So Finance Committee, Susan Kneff, Chair, Mickey Capor, Christina Skinner, Skinner. And I'm reading the board member names. Board member, um, representative of the committee. The audit committee is only, there are only board members on that committee. That's Mickey Capor, Chair, Michael Brandis, and Peter McSherry. Negotiations Committee, Sarah Kenny, Chair, Mickey Capor, Christina Skinner. Facilities Committee, Eddie Lennon, Chair, Susan Kneff, Sarah Kenny. And our Professional Development Committee Liaison for this twenty-five, twenty-six school year is Michael Brandis. Athletic Liaison is Sarah Kenny. TA Liaison is Sarah Kenny. Bronx School School Liaison is Peter McSherry. Strategy and Curriculum Committee, Christina Skinner, Michael Brandis. Christina Skinner is Chair, Michael Brandis, Sarah Kenny. Health and Safety Committee Rep, Board Rep is Eddie Lennon. Medicaid Committee is Mickey Capor. The Westchester Pundin School Boards Association Liaison and the New York School Boards Legislative Liaison. And Southern Westchester, Bosie's Liaison will be Eddie Lennon. Policy Committee, Peter McSherry is Chair, Michael Brandis, and Susan Kneff. And I think we will need a motion to approve this.
So we're calling for a motion to approve the Board of Education's Committee and Liaison Assignments for the new school year.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So now at this point, since we nominated the, we selected the members of the Audit Committee, we need to administer the oath to the members of the Audit Committee and the one present here tonight is Peter McSherry. So Peter, do you solemnly affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York and that you will faithfully discharge, according to the best of your ability, the duties of a member of Audit Committee and the Board of Education of the Bronx School Public Schools to which you have been nominated?
I do.
And just as a note, those other members will take their oaths on or before July thirty. And then we have our meeting dates. I can flash those.
Connie, are you able to send calendar invites for those meetings?
To, to which meetings?
To the board meetings.
I have a list that's really based on who needs to get it, like public notice purposes.
Yep.
If people are interested in getting notifications of meetings, we usually do something similar to the Bronco Beat every week announcing the meetings.
I just meant for our account to, for it to go... To the board members. Into our board numbers. School board numbers.
Oh.
Like the Google Calendar invite.
I guess I could set that, you know, send out, put them in my calendar and then invite you.
It just, yeah, it eliminates the, you know, potential for transcription error when you look at the paper.
Include me in that, too.
Okay.
That would be very helpful.
So the list of board meetings is on the screen.
And so we're going to call for a motion to adopt the meeting dates for the new school year. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is this me?
This is, this is you. The lists are attached. I don't know if Dan wanted to reveal any of them. You want me to flash them on the screen?
I guess. This is just annual stuff that were required by statute to have appointed each year. Let's see. You know, goes, something new this year is for the independent auditor. We're going with TBD. We're going to see what Albert thinks of Bonadillo when they're doing the audit for this past fiscal year. And we have the option to go with them for two more years or we have, we can do an RFP. But, so we're going with TBD for them. Everything else is, this is really boilerplate, stuff that comes from the state. We are, you know, our Claims Auditor, Tobin and Company. Internal Auditor, Cherry Becker. The attorneys. Financial Advisor, Insurance Brokers. Medical Director, Architect of Record.
Okay, so we're going to call for a motion for approval of the annual appointments, authorizations, designations, official undertakings, and certifications for our new school year. Motion?
First.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is the annual policy review, financial policies.
Oh, we're there already? Let's see, policies. We have three policies, purchasing, annual budget investments, that we're reviewed and recommending no changes. And then we have four other policies, two revised and two new.
Can we take the first, uh, motion on the first set? Annual policies for review?
Okay, so call for a motion to approve the following policies for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. The proposed budget investment policy and purchasing policy. Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Then we have four other policies, travel reimbursement. Hasn't been updated recently. We're adjusting amounts for reimbursement because we're finding that, you know, reasonable amounts exceed our policy these days. The amounts haven't changed in probably twenty years. Use of credit cards, we want to revise that. We're finding we need a credit card more and more for deposits and large payments. And basically, the credit card, I will be the only one allowed to use it and it'll be kept in the safe. Let's see, and then two more policies related to inventory and capital asset accounting. Both are recommended. We're, we're past due for a state audit. And I think having, you know, taking a crack at these two policies will be viewed favorably in their eyes. And all of these policies come on recommendation. I think the first one, travel reimbursement, is kind of an update of our own policy. The other three are New York State School Boards Recommended Language.
So we're going to call for a motion to approve the following policies for a first reading. Motion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And then we have three policies before you this evening that are a second reading. The first reading was in June. And that is the required policy of students and personal electronic devices and the leadership team and parents and students feel good about where we landed with that. And then we have the ex officio student member of the board, which we had had in place. Now it's a requirement. And then there's a required policy on extreme heat conditions. And basically, that is requiring districts to ensure that employees and students are in spaces that are not above eighty-eight degrees. So I ask for a second reading on that.
And we have enough air conditioning that we can, we can do it.
That's right.
Other, there are other districts out there that actually had to dismiss early or something like that towards the end, last week of school. But we don't have to.
So calling for a motion to approve the following three policies after a second reading. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Speaking of heat, did we respond to that summer orchestra person?
I believe Mike Lee has taken care of that.
Okay.
So as a result of this policy, the appointment of the ex officio student members of the board. And it resolved that the Board of Education of the Bronx School Union Preschool District appoints Mr. Thomas Freeman as ex officio student member of the board and Ms. Elizabeth Barnes, Ms. Louise Jacobs, and Ms. Karik Kaczynski as alternate ex officio student members of the board for the twenty-five, twenty-six year, twenty-six school year. So we're going to call for a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This next annual approval is for the list of impartial hearing officers that we are required to use. New York State Education Department keeps the list. It's in alphabetical order and we must adhere to that. So that is on the website. And the, it's a rotational list that the board must approve each year.
So call to motion to approve the list of impartial hearing officers registered on the New York State Education Department website.
Motion.
Second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Next one, also a requirement that the board consider for approval, the appointment of members to serve as chairpeople of the Committee on Special Education as well as the Committee on Preschool Special Education. So in this district, historically, we have Christine Dowd as our Director of People Personnel Services as well as the school psychologists.
So we're calling for a motion for the approval of the appointment of the members to serve on the Committee of Special Education and the Committee of Preschool Special Education for the new school year. Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
This is for, call for a motion to approve the draft minutes for the regular meeting of the June ninth, twenty twenty-five meeting. Motion? Questions?
Motion?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I think at this point, we pause the meeting to open, to open the public hearing. On the district-wide safety plan.
Seven oh nine.
Great. So this also is a requirement. Every district must have a district-wide safety plan. There needs to be, it needs to be posted and for at least thirty days. And ours has been posted since June first. And the purpose of this safety plan is to make sure that we have appropriate protocols and procedures in place. New to this year's requirement is that you have to use specific verbiage, which we already do, about shelter in place. And that has already been in place for us, so that was not a change. The one change that is required is what they call after-school annex, which makes it sound like a location, but it's not. It refers to any programs that are happening in the school after school hours with people who don't typically attend school here. The person in charge of that program needs to make sure that everyone knows where the closest fire exits are and what to do in, in an emergency. So we have already spoken to the leadership of the adult school and other organizations that are here outside of school hours. So that was really the only new requirement that we did not have in place prior.
And at this point, we adopt, we open, we're open for public comments? Anyone on the...
Nope. Nothing on the line.
So at this point, we adopt the...
Call for a motion to adopt the twenty-five, twenty-six?
Call for a motion to adopt the twenty-five, twenty-six district-wide safety plan.
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So now we adjourn this meeting and reconvene in our regular meeting.
At seven oh nine?
And now we move to you for personal ones.
Great. Quite a substantive personnel agenda this evening. The board and I have had an opportunity to discuss these matters in executive session. We are, I just want to point out in honor Amy Bastone Tragon, who is retirement, retiring after twenty-five years as a science teacher in the high school. She will be... She will be missed and we wish her only the very best. Others are new appointments, all positions that have been budgeted for mainly as a result of resignations. A number of teacher aide resignations, which were expected. Christine Dowd and Michelle Tween are busy interviewing teacher aides for the fall. And then we have a number of other appointments, including a new senior account clerk for our business office, which will round out the expertise in there very nicely. And then our annual appointments for special other stipends and special rates. And we are pleased that we are appointing this evening the last of coaches needed for the fall. So we have a full complement of fall coaches. And we appreciate the time in the first nine days of his new job that Anthony Van Leek has, has put into place. So you have before you to consider items A through double F, please.
Call for a motion to accept personnel action items A through double F. Motion?
Motion?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I do want to just take a quick moment. For those of you who are paying very close attention, we launched our new website today. And I did want to make sure and publicly thank our Director of Technology, Mr. Brad Ashley, for doing Yeoman's job. He has spent a considerable amount of time with every detail, soliciting feedback from parents and the board and teachers and the leadership team and somehow kept his cool and patience through it all. And we see this beautiful product today. We, we encourage feedback. You know, every time I look at it, I think of something else or I see something else. So I encourage the community to browse through it. And there is a survey that solicits feedback, if there is any. So again, thank you, Brad.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you, Brad. Thank you, Brad.
The athletic website's amazing.
Great.
Next, we're going to go to Dan for the financial reports.
The board has the May financial report. As anticipated, we're starting to see some additional surplus in the expenditure area. We've known all years that revenues are robust. We're now projecting over two point one million in surplus from the current year, which is great. Seeing as though there's, later on, we're transferring one point three million out of our capital reserve and we've already committed another, I guess, five million to be transferred out of the capital reserve. It'll be nice to be putting a couple million hopefully back in. And I, I would expect that would might grow a little from here as well. Because we're still closing down purchase orders from last year.
It would be great to take another look at the debt amortization schedules too, to see if there's a way to adjust the amount of the bond and-
Yeah.
Keep the, keep the tax increases down.
Sure. I mean, you know, we're monitoring interest rates. We have flexibility over the next two years. And if we don't have to borrow fifteen million, we won't. You know, we'll borrow what we need.
Yep. Any surprises yet?
Not, not on that. You know, I'll, I'll get to the facilities update.
Okay.
That's a little early for surprises on that one yet. But, let's see. Now, I have a number of financial action items as promised. The last meeting in June, this meeting and the first meeting in September are usually heavy with kind of annual business, approving contractors and such for, I guess, the first two, A and B, Security Guard Services and Altaris Consulting Group. Altaris really helps us with our, our safety plan. You know, Vic Prenney, who's our full-time Director of Security, comes through Altaris and most of their contract is, is to provide for his salary and benefits. Then we're also moving funds from the capital reserve, which I, I mentioned a few minutes ago, to fund the summer projects, the security vestibule and the flood pump structure. The way the accounting works on that is we increase the general fund expenditure budget by one point three million to receive the transfer from the fund balance reserve for capital projects in that same amount. And then transfer one point three million from the general fund to the capital fund as approved by referendum on May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four. And this transfer will be effective as of June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five. We then have a slew of kind of contractors for tutoring, for special service needs, nursing, and psychological evaluations in the, you know, the special ed universe. And we have non-residential tuition rates for two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six. And then legal services retainers for both Keen and Bean and Von Shenick and King. And that gets me, what, Connie, A through N?
Not O.
Not O. There's also the other two services.
Yes. We have engagement letter with Tobin and Company for claims auditing.
Is there anything significantly different in there from what we've had in the past and prior years?
Nope.
Take these all at once?
I think so.
So, call for a motion to approve financial action items A through O. Motion?
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Dan, you're still with you, Dan, with facilities?
Sure. I'll start with some good news. Asbestos abatement for the security vestibule is complete. Timeline is intact thus far. We're starting to see what the footprint is going to be like. They've started framing already. So they're making good progress there. Not so great news, flood pump structure, as feared by anyone who's ever waited for structural steel. The structural steel is late. We're anticipating delivery by this coming Monday. And Paradi still think, who was the contractor, still thinks that they can meet the timeline. But we're a couple weeks behind because the steel's not here yet. They think they can make up the time. And that obviously is not in the building. If we had to make accommodations for that to go a week or two late, which we don't want to do, we could because it's outside the building.
When's it expected to be done?
We were expecting it to be done by the start of school, so by the end of August. Let's see. There's no anticipated change orders thus far in either project above the allowances, which is always good news. And there was a kickoff meeting for the twenty million dollar project with the architect, consulting engineer, construction manager, Mike Lee and myself. Let's see. The timeline is as follows. We're expecting schematic designs to be completed by the end of July. Design development to be completed by early September. Let's see, mechanical, electrical and plumbing schematic design to begin in September so that we would have construction documents and our New York State Education Department submission ready by Thanksgiving. And it's an aggressive timeline. They're hoping for SED evaluation and permitting by March fifteenth so that we'd be able to bid and open bids around the middle of April. And that would get us started this coming summer, five, you know, in the summer of twenty-six, which is good news. If, if we can meet that timeline, I've always been a little skeptical of that timeline, with New Rochelle in this merger as well.
So this is a call for motion to approve the boys' ice hockey merger. Motion?
Motion?
Second. All in favor? Where's the ice that you use? Ice hutch? Ice hutch down-
Yeah, the local one's the ice hutch. They play a lot of games up in Brewster, I think. There's another one somewhere around here.
And it's the one in Memphis?
Could be.
But most, when the kids go to watch something, they got ice hutch.
Yeah.
And it's late, you can't have ice huts.
How many boys do you have?
How many?
It's six.
It's six?
New Rochelle?
No, we did. Bronschole has six players, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we have six. And like Edmond has one, Eastchester has one, it was like two. So adding, having this merger, a lot of six or seven more are possible.
And the overall team size is down from, even including these guys, the overall team size is down from last year.
Right.
So.
And our guys are pretty good, so they should meet in there.
Nope.
Time on the ice, if they want it, so.
And Dan, one more action item?
What's the last action item?
Yes.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, there's one more action item. It's a, a settlement. And it was discussed in executive session, recommended by our attorneys. So we're asking the board to approve that as well.
So we're calling for a motion to approve this other action item. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So we're near the end. Just to note that our next board meeting is Thursday, September fourth, seven o'clock. And that will be it for this meeting. Do we have any public comments?
I think that's a record, Sarah. Congratulations.
My first and last time.
I don't want to say it.
So we're clear.
Big shoes to fill.
Wait for you to take over. So I'm asking for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Second. All in favor?
Aye.